What?
People in the follow-up meeting, I listen to them.
I texted Paul today and I said, "Does it..." They probably don't care.
That's the whole plan. Past this at 9:30.
Did you go to LSU?
So you don't have a dog?
Okay. Well, it's a big game.
I just walked right over. You know, we're out here so you can actually sit on the other side of her.
Who's the other new one, Zach?
Zach.
Okay, have you guys met him?
Is Joe not here? Then we have seven seats here, nine seats.
Touche.
It doesn't really matter what she thinks, does it? It's the way it is. You want to slide down the first two rows? Okay, then let's move down to...
Oh, we're just interspersed. We're going anywhere.
Well, that's all.
Sid, he said, "We..."
Goes back to that three years. So that was long.
I need my little employees to get busy tomorrow.
Uh-oh.
Parag, you turn your poison.
Hey.
Happy New Year.
We got scheming up. Yeah.
So over here.
We draft a law.
Yeah?
Nice. I know.
Quick game of roller.
It's your moment.
See you tomorrow. Yeah. Thanks for coming. So Lars, Lars gonna take care of it all? Mix it up. Make it known. Yeah. Because who are y'all missing? Fantastic. So who are y'all missing? Um, Chris and Sami? Yeah, and Zach. Fantastic.
So you were basically presenting in the planning commission, the way I used to think.
The people.
Will be the person, right?
You picked a good one.
I was talking to Ron. I don't think...
Are you gonna have a forum?
In January for the...
Do you think?
Um...
There's four here tonight.
One percent.
And Ron, I think is out.
Let's think about it.
I think it's, uh... I don't know. That hurts Sami. Can't make it. Ron, or the...
I'm not gonna ask any questions. This is my first night. But when I was going through these, I'm going, "What? Where'd they come up with that?"
Because you'll need to, like...
See where we are and what...
I smell something away.
Joe, how are you? Sorry.
See, Laura, I'm glad you're mixing, glad you're mixing it up.
I thought we were, you know... I thought we were doing...
Who said I'm coming in tomorrow?
She said.
It's like a brick wall right here.
Yeah.
We're all a team.
We're all one big team.
Kurt, did you have a good holiday?
Yeah, it was nice, thanks. How about you?
It was good. Had all the kids home for a couple of days, so it was good to see everybody.
How many kids is that?
Three. We got two daughters and a son. The son lives close by. The two daughters, one is in Seattle, one's in Philly, so... Did your son, is your son in DC here? Did you go up there? But how they... I used to go every year.
Well, we'll see.
Up to Manhattan, which is awesome. Rockefeller Center, Central District, Christmas tree.
Oh, my gosh, I keep hitting this.
No, I couldn't, I couldn't. No, there's a lot of water back there.
Are there?
Yeah, there's, no, there's tons of water.
Eight o'clock. Shoot. Oh, there he is. I was like, "All right." Now I'm gonna get nervous.
I'll tell you what.
All right, are we on tonight?
Yep.
Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and get started, so, uh, think there's a football game tonight? Welcome to, uh, the January 13th, 2020. Wow. Regularly scheduled work session. There's only one item on our agenda tonight. Public comment is allowed if it is germane to an agenda item. If you wish to speak, you're required to fill out a public comment card and turn it into the city clerk before the agenda item has been read. If you're speaking on behalf of an organization, you must fill out an affidavit that you have authority of said organization. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record. Public comment will be allowed for a total of 10 minutes per agenda item and no more than two minutes per person. Public comment will be heard at the beginning of the item. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you wish to speak, bring your comment card to the city clerk. Once the item is called, no other public comments will be accepted. So I would ask, is there anyone with public comment tonight? Okay, um, so I will have the clerk sound the agenda item tonight, or I can sound it. We're fortunate tonight to have the planning commission. We appreciate you guys, all your hard work that's been spent on this for the last, what, three years now? But, and everybody else involved, staff and citizens, but we appreciate you guys here working with us. And, uh, tonight, it's a joint work session between with the planning commission and the mayor and council on our tree conservation ordinance. So with that, I will turn it over to whichever staff member. Do we have anything on the staff side first?
Uh, we're, when you're ready to go, Parag and Sandra, let's get the presentation rolling.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, and the planning commission members. Thank you for coming to this joint work session of the city council and the planning commission members. I'm Parag Agrawal, city's community development director. Today, I also have with me city arborist Sandra Doyt. We are here to present you the updated draft of the city's tree conservation ordinance. The new draft of the tree conservation ordinance does a great job in balancing the city's dual objectives of preserving the tree, of preserving the tree canopy with the understanding that open fields, pastures, and agriculture settings are also critical in maintaining Milton's small-town quality of life. We have provided reasonable flexibility and the arborists' discretion in this new tree preservation ordinance, and in the same manner, we have also added more transparency by making sure that all the waivers that are granted for the tree preservation ordinance goes in front of the planning commission. Uh, I will say that the staff is very proud of the work that has gone into the update of the tree preservation ordinance. We had a great stakeholders committee that was represented by people from various backgrounds. After the stakeholders committee adopted this tree preservation ordinance, we started working with the planning commission. I want to personally thank the former chair of the planning commission, the new city council member, Paul Moore, and the vice chair, Ron Gilbert, for working with us on the tree preservation ordinance. So I will say, when the stakeholders committee, the planning commission, and the staff was working on this ordinance, we had a, we were on the same page on the vast majority of the things. But there are some few open-ended issues which the staff would like to further discuss with the city council and the mayor. So for today's presentation, Sandra has created a great PowerPoint presentation in which she will be basically going through the important points of the conservation ordinance, and she will also be going through the history of the ordinance. We are not planning to go line by line or word by word. I know the redline version of the ordinance was given to the planning commission members and the city council members last week, so you do have that document with you. So before Sandra starts her presentation, the last thing which I will say is, as we all know, all ordinances are organic in nature. Although the planning commission, stakeholders committee, and the staff has done a great job in making sure we are coming up with all the scenarios, all the wording is perfect, but whenever there's implementation, there could be some issues which are discovered at a later stage. And we can always have some minor tweaks or minor edits to the tree preservation ordinance after a few months or after a couple of years. So again, with this, I will ask Sandra to go over her presentation, and then we can basically have a discussion between the planning commission and the city council members.
Okay, so I just want to reiterate what Parag said and say thank you for letting me come and present this tree ordinance to you tonight. We have worked on this really hard. I know some people have been working on it longer than others. I'm kind of the newbie here, so you'll have to forgive me if I'm not familiar with all the pain. But we will, um, is Dave gonna... Let me... Now he does it. I thought he already had it up. Okay, so we're gonna start this slide presentation in just a second. I know, right? Okay. So now we can start. Favorite subject of trees. And our second favorite subject is tree ordinances, right? So let me just kind of give you an overview of what we're gonna be going over tonight. So first, we'll go over the objectives, and these are three objectives that were used while we were rewriting the ordinance. These were the objectives that were given to the stakeholder committee, and we shared them with planning commission, and these are objectives that staff kept in mind as well while we were working on this amendment. Then we'll be going over how we got here, a little bit of the history of the tree ordinance. I will do my best to fill in as many gaps as I can. Then we'll talk about what's new. So as Parag mentioned, this is kind of a big document. You have a copy of the redline in front of you, which you will see is 50 pages, but don't panic because that is just the redline. Once we get rid of the redlines, it's a little smaller. But we tried to highlight everything that's important in there that we felt was big enough to share and show you what's new in the ordinance. Then I'll kind of go through some examples of how it works. We'll look at individual homes and properties that are existing and already developed, and then we'll also looked at a couple of examples of undeveloped lots or developable lots and how that will work with the new tree ordinance. Then one of the things that Parag mentioned was that there was a couple of things that we didn't come to a complete consensus on with all the groups working on this. And one of those things was heritage trees. So we just wanted to kind of open up a small discussion about that and kind of get a feeling of how everybody wants to proceed with heritage trees. And then at the end, if you have any questions, feel free to answer questions at the end. But anytime during this presentation, please feel free to throw out a question. All right, so let's get started with the objectives. Like I said, these are the objectives that we used the whole time we were working on this amendment. So the first objective is to conserve trees with the understanding that open fields, pastures, and agricultural settings are as critical as natural vegetation and heavily wooded land in maintaining Milton's small-town quality of life. Our second objective is to strive to achieve our council-adopted tree management plan goal of no net tree loss. And the third and final objective, create the least intrusive regulations to obtain our objectives on both developed and undeveloped properties while ensuring we do not place an unfair burden on property owners. Okay, now we'll go through the brief history of how we got here. So as many of you are probably aware, when the city of Milton was incorporated, the tree density ordinance that was basically the same one that Fulton County had was adopted. It was later tweaked and kind of customized to fit Milton, and I think the final version of the tree ordinance was adopted in 2010. But then, as the city started to grow and there started to be more development and growth, there started to be a concern with clearcutting. So that created the desire to update the tree ordinance. And then those discussions, it's my understanding that it was decided to move from a density-based ordinance to a tree canopy-based ordinance, because that's kind of the way most municipalities are going. The tree density ordinance is kind of outdated and is kind of based on old forestry practices and basal area, which doesn't really apply or not easy to apply to development and measurement when you're looking at canopy. Since most of our benefits are obtained from canopy, we wanted to look at the canopy. So at that time, a consultant was brought in, and I believe a first stakeholder committee was created, and you had the new tree canopy ordinance was adopted. But with the adoption, there was a discussion of a need for balance in that ordinance and to kind of reduce some of the complexity of it. So again, the task came up to revise the tree ordinance. A new stakeholder committee came on board, and then luckily, I came on board in February, and everything kind of got pushed on to me. So I don't know whose luck that was.
So when we hired Sandra, we did not tell her that...
Right. Smart. Okay, so when I came on board in February, Parag was nice enough to give me a month break before I jumped into the stakeholder committee. But when we started those meetings back up in March, we kind of picked some of the main topics that we wanted to go over with the stakeholder committee, some of the main points of discussion in the tree ordinance. So we talked about minimum canopy coverage requirements, protected and specimen trees, and when we talked about protected and specimen trees, we kind of talked about the minimum-size criteria, parking lot requirements. We talked about critical root zone, and then I introduced a new definition to everyone and throughout structural root plates. We also talked about the tree bank and the tree fund. And we talked about the tree removal permit process. And this discussion on tree removal permit process really kind of focused on existing homes and developed lots where there was no further development occurring. So after working with the stakeholder committee, we came up with a draft and presented it to them, and they were comfortable with it. So after that, we went to the planning commission. In the planning commission, we kind of went through all the changes that we had made to the original canopy ordinance. And from that came discussions and a lot of recommendations, and we actually got a lot of good recommendations from the planning commission and went ahead and incorporated a lot of those. Some of the big examples of those are we created transparency for waivers. So the planning commission had an idea of keeping waivers in the public and making sure that we reviewed all the waivers we were doing to make sure there wasn't anything going on with the ordinance that needed to be changed. So we created a section of the ordinance in the waiver section that allows us to take waivers to the planning commission on a quarterly basis and present them to them. We also added some supportive language for the manual, so we wanted to make sure that whatever we were enforcing in the ordinance followed through all the way through the manual. The manual and the ordinance are kind of two separate documents we've learned, but also kind of the same document. So we needed to make sure that they supported each other, and we needed to make sure that we had the right language in there. Then we also went through some minor changes for grammar and clarification, just kind of wordsmithing the document and making sure we had it the way we wanted it. During that, we decided that we should have a joint work session and bring the stakeholder committee back, because there were some things that we noticed as staff that maybe the planning commission and stakeholder committee weren't really seeing eye to eye on, and we wanted to bring them together so we could get a consensus on things before we moved forward with the ordinance. So during that joint work session, some of the big things we hit on were the specimen tree size criteria, and we talked about canopy coverage with existing canopy, kind of trying to figure out a way to avoid clearcutting during development. And then we also talked about the minimum canopy coverage for C1 and C2. So now I just kind of wanted to go over what's new in the ordinance, and like we said, this is kind of hitting the big highlights and kind of the big changes that I think you'll be the most interested in. So one of the first changes we made was removing construction zone and improvement area, which restricted the creation of yards and the pastoral look. But you remember, that was one of the objectives that we had at the beginning of this. So we found that the construction zone and improvement area kind of gave you a small building envelope to work in, and we realized that people aren't just building in the building envelope, they're doing other things in the building envelope, like creating yards and open space for kids and playgrounds and things like that. The other big change we made was protected trees. So if you remember, in the original canopy ordinance that was passed, protected trees started at two inches, and they were also six inches. And the thing that we didn't like was there was really no cohesiveness, because the two inches was for undeveloped properties or developable properties, and the six inches was for existing homes, not developed. We kind of wanted to make sure the protected trees was consistent throughout the ordinance, so we came up with the idea of starting it at eight inches. We also included some language or got rid of some language that wasn't necessary to allow reasonable discretion for tree removal on developed lots. The tree canopy ordinance really kind of limited the homeowner's ability to take down trees. You could really only take down trees if they were dead, dying, or hazardous and for almost no other reason. So we wanted to give a little more discretion to the city arborists in that aspect. And the next thing is, existing trees must make up one-third of the required canopy coverage. And this, like I mentioned, was created to kind of prevent clearcutting during development. So one of the things we saw that was missing in the ordinance was the way of just keeping somebody from annihilating every tree on their property. So, you know, we have the canopy coverage requirement, and we'll kind of go over that a little more later, and we're saying that of the required canopy coverage, a third of that must come from the existing trees. And then we also discussed canopy coverage for AG1. Since AG1 is the majority of the city, we wanted to make sure we had the right canopy coverage requirement for that zoning. And if you remember, it started out at 60% in the canopy ordinance, and after lots and lots of discussion, we decided to bring it down to 57%, because that is what our canopy study showed that we have, and so we didn't feel it was necessary to make people increase it 3%. We wanted to honor the unfair burden objective, and we kept it at 57%, so that way it matched what our canopy coverage is today.
So before you move forward, could you please explain why did we choose from two to two inches to eight inches? Why only eight inches?
Well, eight inches is where our specimen tree sizes start, so it made sense that protected trees start at the eight-inch mark where specimen trees start. Which is kind of what... So this is kind of a breakdown to kind of show you some of the big, the two big changes that we made. So in the density ordinance, protected trees started at 15 inches diameter, and in the canopy ordinance, the original canopy ordinance, protected trees were six inches on developed lots and two inches on developable lots. And then what we came up with was the eight inches.
Quick question, Sandra.
Sure.
Maybe, um, what's the difference between a specimen and a protected tree?
So a protected tree is what determines when a permit is required for tree removal. A specimen tree is that extra special tree that you'll have to do extra recompense for. Does that make sense? Okay.
So a protected tree is just a 15-inch tree?
Yeah, that's basically...
Specimen tree is a big oak tree or something that's got some character and old...
Right. Well, the 15-inch was under the old ordinance, so now it's gonna be eight inches. And a protected tree, that's just kind of the baseline of where you say, "This is when a permit's required." This is when a tree canopy plan is required.
So a protected tree could also be like a sweet gum tree. If it's a bigger sweet gum tree, I would have to pull a permit that's over age.
Right, right. Eight inches covers any tree. We don't get into species with the protected tree. But on the other hand, specimen tree, that is kind of where we divide them up a little bit and pick our favorites. Just kidding, I don't have favorites with trees. But specimen trees in the density ordinance was 27 inches DBH for hardwoods and pine, 24 inches DBH for beech, and eight inches DBH for your smaller trees like your dogwoods, red buds, and sour woods. Under the canopy ordinance, it changed a little bit, and specimen trees started 24 inches DBH for hardwoods and softwoods except pines. And then you had 18 inches DBH for medium-height trees, 27 inches DBH for pines, and eight inches for the small-height trees, which again are your dogwoods, red buds, and sour woods. So when we did the revision, we looked at starting it at 24 inches for your large and medium-height trees, and we decided to get rid of the 18 inches requirement, because that just kind of made things a little complicated, and most people don't really understand the difference between a medium and a large-height canopy tree. And then we classified pines, sweet gums, and tulip poplars as 27 inches DBH. And the reason why we lumped sweet gums and tulip poplars with pines is because they're kind of similar in their wood characteristics. They're kind of both a softwood tree, and they're fast growers, and they're kind of pioneer species, and they're, I hate to say, kind of less desirable. So we decided to lump those all together.
Question. Why would it be a specimen tree if it's less desirable? This question.
Well, because of the size...
Pine trees either, so...
Well, for a pine to make it to 27 inches, that's usually a pretty good feat, and that usually means that it's a pretty, it's a pretty healthy tree if it lasts that long without either, A, someone taking it down, or a storm taking it down. Any other questions about specimen trees?
Feel free to, if anybody has any questions.
Okay, I'll just move on. So let's get into how it works. So our ordinance is kind of divided into two main sections. There's an Article II and an Article III. Article II basically deals with tree removal not associated with development or construction, or as we like to call it, developed lots. And then you have Article III, which deals with tree removal that is associated with development or construction, which we like to call our developable lots. So when you are an existing homeowner and you're not doing any further construction, you just want to remove trees, you do have to apply for a tree removal permit, and that is for a live or dead tree over the eight inches. If the tree is alive, there will be a application fee, and our application fee starts at $25. It's basically $25 per tree with a cap at $150, so it would never exceed $150. And then you also have to maintain an existing canopy or the minimum canopy requirement from Table 1 as an existing homeowner. So when you're doing tree removal associated with development, you're gonna have to submit a tree canopy plan with that, and that's when we get into the whole site plan thing. And with that, we're gonna include a tree survey and a tree protection plan, and this is when it goes into review for staff. So as city arborist, I would be reviewing the tree canopy plans when they came in to make sure they're compliant with the ordinance. So they would have to make sure they meet their existing canopy or the minimum requirement from Table 1. And also now, they have to do the one-third of required canopy must be existing trees to remain. So this one-third canopy requirement really only comes into play when we're talking about development.
Question on that.
Sure.
And I certainly understand the thought process on that. What if it is a site, though? And, you know, interestingly, we all think about trees as environmental, we're saving the environment, but also with our environmental laws and, you know, EPA and water drainage and stormwater and what... EPA and water drainage and stormwater and whatnot, that kind of conflicts sometimes. You know, a lot of times, people don't want to clearcut or take the trees down. But in order to get the drainage and whatnot and keep water quality there, they have to. So what happens in a situation if there's no way to keep, you know, if it's a certain type? Is there remedies that they can do to...
Well, there is alternative compliance, and then there's also waivers. So we do have a way of getting a waiver when you have like an undue hardship, something that's out of your control. Like if you have steep grades and you have to deal with drainage and stuff. And that would be something that I would probably consult with our engineer on to make sure there really is truly a burden out there. So you have the waiver option. And then we do have alternative compliance options that are available, where you can plant two-thirds of the trees on the site and a third off-site in a tree bank. Or you can pay for one-third in the tree fund. And the tree fund is what the city then uses to plant trees on public property throughout the city. So we do have options that we could work with people on that. But ultimately, our goal is to try to get people to fall in line with the ordinance.
I totally understand that.
Okay. Somehow we moved back. Okay. So I wanted to throw up there Table 1, just kind of, because I've kind of referenced it a couple of times. So this is where we get into what the minimum canopy coverage requirement is. And as you can see, for AG1 is at the top, as well as some other zonings like NUP and CUP. So that is where we went from 60% to 57%. And then most of the other zonings, we kept the same, with the exception of the C1, C2 that we talked about. Originally, it was 20%, and we moved it up to 30%. So then we also added the language at the bottom, which I know it's hard to see, I apologize. I thought it would come out better. Where we have, let me see if I can read it. Residential lots less than three acres, if the existing canopy is less than 57%, they have to maintain the existing canopy with a minimum of 25%. So basically, that means if you're less than three acres, if you already have less than 57%, you can maintain what's existing, but you can't have 0%. So if you had no trees out there to begin with, for whatever reason, we wanted you to bring it up to at least 25% canopy coverage with plantings. Does that make sense? I see a confused look.
If you have zero, how are you bringing it up?
By planting.
By planting new trees.
You're talking about undeveloped piece of property?
Undeveloped. This is during the development phase, and this is for lots that are under three acres.
And then if it's over three acres, you could basically keep your existing, and there would be no minimum. So that was our way of trying to incentivize large-acre lots and over-three acres.
And when you plant to meet that requirement, it can be young plantings. But you get the credit for what the full development canopy will be at its maturity.
Right.
So it's not a burdensome planting to get to a full canopy today.
Any other questions about Table 1? I know it's really hard to read, I apologize. So I wanted to go through an example of a developed lot where somebody is coming in and wanting to do a tree removal. So they would fill out a tree removal permit application. And as you can see on this lot, they want to remove three trees. They're all pines, and they are 15, 18, and 17 inches in diameter. As you can see, this existing canopy is quite extensive. So doing a quick measurement on our GIS, I came up with 81% canopy coverage. This lot is four acres and zone AG1. So that means they would have to maintain their existing or a minimum of 57%. So they could bring it down to 57%, but they can't go below 57%. Since obviously they're way over the 57%, and the removal of these three trees would not bring them below the 57%, the recompense required would be zero. But they would still have to pay the application fee of $25 per tree, and they'd be $75. Any questions about that?
Per tree?
It's $25 per tree, so it's $75 total.
That's not an application fee, that's a removal fee.
Well, it's called an application fee, because it's...
I don't have to give you 25 pieces of paper saying every single tree that I want to remove is on a separate piece of paper?
It's an administrative fee. It's under, it's under Appendix A, it's an administrative fee.
Okay.
But if they are within... That just seems needlessly punitive. I mean, if it's within the coverage that we'd like to see, why charge the $75? I mean, that just seems petty.
Well, it's the same reason we would charge for a special event permit. It's for the administrative work that would be done in accordance with the application.
I think that's different. Like, if you apply for an alcohol license on a business, it's going to generate money on that alcohol license. I think that's different.
And ultimately, it's a policy decision that you all have to, you all have to decide.
Right.
But the reality of it is, we, this is a very common course of business.
Fee was in the original canopy-based ordinance that was passed, so I, I did not touch it.
And let me just, if you don't mind, add too that...
Sure.
You know, and basically, that fee, and I understand where you're coming from, and we all may feel that way. But it's a, you know, it's just an administrative fee to offset the cost of managing the process. So it is a policy decision, we could certainly change it if you guys put strong support on that.
And Sandra, based on your experience, no one has pushed back on this fee, okay?
No, no, I don't get any complaints about the fees, surprisingly.
Just a question, do you have a lot of people actually, for existing lots, coming forward requesting permits? Are people actually...
Yeah, for a while, I was getting like 10 to 12 a week. It's kind of slowed down during the holidays. People aren't thinking about tree removal during the holidays, they're spending money on other things. But it'll probably be picking back up there again. And as, you know, as word gets out, I'm getting more and more applications from tree companies. So I expect them to kind of educate the public about it.
And that's what I would say is typically, most people aren't planning on cutting the tree down themselves and say, oh, I better go get a permit. They hire a company. And without them even thinking about it, the company goes and applies for it. And that may be one reason why you don't hear much about fees, because the company may just absorb it into their costs and people don't see the fee.
And one of the things which we can talk at a later stage is like, one of the things which we are trying to do with this ordinance, we also want to have much more educational sessions so that the tree removal companies and the citizens, they do know that if you want to go through this process, you have to give us an application for the tree removal.
Right. After the ordinance is passed, we plan to roll it out.
To, to the companies that you're aware of?
To the communities.
Lovely side, okay.
Yeah.
I have a question. So Sandra, when you go through and you do that analysis of what is the existing tree canopy on a lot, is that something you do or is the GIS? How much work is that? Is that something, you know...
Well, I do it using the GIS. So I don't know how familiar everyone is with GIS or how often you use it. But there is a measurement tool in there, and so you can actually measure. So that's what I do, I just measure the square footage of the canopy. And you can tell where the hardwoods are and the pines are. So you go out a little further when you get the hard... Because these are leaf-off photos. So you do kind of have to watch for the shadows and the, and the outline of the hardwood trees.
It's terribly labor-intensive, it's manageable.
No, after you do it a few times, it becomes a lot easier. I do it every day, so I'm, I'm used to it. I might be a little quicker at it than some people that are just starting out using GIS, but I don't think it's super hard. So this is the, I'll move on to the next example I have. This is another lot where somebody comes in and wants to remove a tree, or two trees in this case. So the first tree is a 15-inch pine that is dead. The second tree is a 22-inch poplar. So their existing canopy is around 47%. They're one acre, zoned AG1. So again, they have the, they have to maintain their existing canopy or 57% minimum. Since they're already below the 57%, they basically just have to maintain what they have. So they're at 47%, they have to maintain what they have. We do not require recompense on dead trees. So they don't have a recompense for the dead tree. But for the poplar, it's that kind of tree kind of behind the house. So I measured that canopy, and it does come out around 1,600 square feet, which is actually our signed canopy that we gave. So that's a pretty good indication that our signed canopy is pretty accurate. So they would have to plant back that 1,600 square feet for the tulip poplar, but nothing for the pine. And they would just pay the $25 for the poplar, but nothing for the pine.
So what is 1,600 square feet? So are you saying that, what would they have to replace for that?
So it would be an oak or a hickory or a poplar, or...
1,600 is the mature, not...
Right. Or they could plant back like two red maples that are 900 each.
But give me an example, like, so let's say for the poplar, what would they have to plant if one tree?
What do they really have to plant?
So one tree to get 1,600 square feet would be like a red oak.
And what size?
Two-inch caliper, sorry.
So it's not overburdened?
Yeah.
Did you have a question, Rick?
Yeah, so if they took it down on their lot, they wanted to remove it, assuming there's a reason they want to take that, that poplar down, somewhere on their lot, they're going to have to plant another tree. There's not a pay-in, hey, I want to just eliminate that tree.
Well, you do have the alternative compliance still. So they could plant two-thirds of that canopy and pay a third into the tree fund. So that would have them planting back smaller trees. So our tree canopy, so if you ever look at the tree species list, and so I didn't print it out with the manual, because it was just getting to be too much paper. That's right, I wanted to save a tree. So I didn't print it out, but if you'll see, so our tree species list, trees start at 150 square feet and go up to 1,600. So you have 150 square-foot trees that are going to be, I'm trying to think of a good example, like a...
Red bud?
Well, red buds, I think, are 400. But it's going to be kind of like a Japanese maple or something that's really compact. And then 400 square feet is when you get into like your dogwoods and red buds. And then 900 square feet is where you get into your maples and Chinese elms, things like that. And then 1,600 square feet is when you get into your larger hardwoods that are your oaks, hickories, poplars, sweet gums, things like that. So, and you can pick any combination to meet that 1,600 square feet. It doesn't have to be an oak tree, it can be anything that meets... And you can plant it anywhere on the site. So it doesn't have to go back where you had the tree. You know, most people are concerned when trees are close to their house. So they don't have to put it right up next to their house, they can put it in the back of the yard where they have plenty of space. Any other questions? This is my last developed lot. Does all that make sense? Okay, so now we're getting into the fun stuff, the developable lots. So here we have a site that is over 30 acres. And somebody's going to want to come in and build a subdivision. So the zoning is AG1. And I kind of broke it down, I think in square footage, just because all the canopy's done in square footage. So I broke it down into acres and square feet. But I don't know if anybody else thinks like square feet, but... The canopy coverage requirement is going to be 57%. And one-third of that 57% would be 19%. So I drew out a little example of what that would look like. So you see, you put your cul-de-sac in, you get nine lots. And by saving the trees that I have highlighted in green, that meets your one-third canopy coverage requirement from existing trees. So it's certainly doable when we're looking at developed lots. So one-third of the 57% is roughly 5.95 acres that we're saving.
Before you did the, the areas in green, had you screened for specimen or other protected types? And so what if the protected or the more specimen types were right where a reasonable spot would be to put a structure?
Well, they would be allowed to put the structure there. Specimen trees just require a little bit more recompense than regular protected trees. So they would most likely have to replant.
And replant with the, like, would you, would you do a reading on what that canopy coverage is, whether it's 1,600 feet or 1,800, and then have a requirement, the same amount of coverage is, has to be planted elsewhere on the, on the whole property?
Right. Well, basically, for specimen trees, the recompense requirement is 150%. So you'd have to plant back what the canopy is and a little bit more.
So you can move up to the 30%, but you still have to recompense the 57%, correct?
Right. Well, the specimen tree recompense is no matter what. So you always have to recompense for specimen trees. And then, yeah, you could replant the rest of your 57%.
Yes, you are right.
So for... In order to do your planting, you wanted to do some large lots with yards and pools and whatever.
Right.
That can clear 70% of what's there to retain the 30% native trees on the site that were there originally. But they still then require, or require a recompense or replant back to a minimum of 57%.
Right.
Or the coverage it was before, just 57%, correct? If they were at 81...
If they were at 81, they could come down to 57%.
Based on zoning, right? Based on zoning, for AG1, it's 57%. For AG1, it's 57%. For T4, we have a different percentage altogether.
So since these are three-acre minimums, is, is there the incentive, is there the incentive for the three-acre lots?
Oh, they're not three acres.
These are not three-acre lots.
Those aren't, oh, I thought like 31 acres. The total site area was like 31 something acres.
There might be a couple of big lots there.
Okay.
That's an actual development.
Okay, but is there a difference between a three-acre minimum?
The three-acre, well, I mean, if your existing was less than 57%, you would just keep the existing.
You do not have to bring, so again...
You wouldn't have to bring it up to the 57%.
Oh, okay, so that is combo.
Yes. So we can preserve, suppose if there's a pasture, we are preserving the pasture. It's not like we are trying to plant the pasture.
Okay.
Sandra, I have a question. So when you go in and decide, how did you decide that's where, is this, is that just random?
It was a little random. I mean, usually, it's easier to obviously save the trees along the edge, the outer edge. And this is actually a kind of unique site, because they're actually keeping that house there. See, there's an existing house over there. So they're actually already not touching that canopy. But, so they were able to keep existing canopy because they're keeping an existing house. So that lot didn't have to be cleared because it already had a house on it.
My comment is, you know, I'm not, I'm, as, as these AG1 neighborhoods come in and, you know, it's almost like a curtain. I'd like to see a curtain around them to people that already live here, you know? And so I, I know that we can't get into that level of detail, but it should be nice to re, you know, save the trees to buffer.
Along the buffer, right.
Especially the view sheds that are...
Yeah, I think most, that's why I tried to save the trees along the edge, because that's usually the, where people want to keep them. But you see, I mean, it just so happened, they had a couple of open areas here that were along the edge that you couldn't really keep. And that's kind of where zoning comes into play, too. It depends on what they're abutting, if there is a buffer requirement. So sometimes they would be required, if they were abutting something, although I think in this case, they're abutting just another AG1. So they wouldn't be required to have a buffer in this case. But in some cases, there are buffer requirements that are done through zoning.
So the rural view shed still applies along the road when it fits into the subdivision and all the different requirements.
Always.
That still is there, so if there's trees in that area...
Right, but that would be along the main road.
The main road.
Along the main road.
On the outside.
Well, it's not always required, that's one of my, one of my pet peeves, whether it's a major plot or a minor plot.
Well, in this case, it would, because it's over three lots, so the rural view shed would apply in this case.
So minor plot, it would, you can go right to the street.
Right, because that, yeah, those, I was just saying, that still would apply. It's an overlay of what you're trying to do. And then it fits into whatever that, whether it's minor or major lot.
It's a topic I look forward to taking up at a later date. Not necessarily part of this at this time, it wasn't contemplated. But I think when, when the council considered that a couple of years ago, I think that was maybe an unintended consequence. That although there are some property right considerations to be given to that as well, that's a debate for another day, but I think it's something we look for, I'd look forward to talking to at some point when we get back into that.
Okay, any other questions about this particular site or move on to the next one? one? Okay, so the next one we'll see is a little higher density. So this is a T4 site, and it's actually like right at an acre. The canopy coverage requirement for T4 is thirty percent, so a third of that would be ten percent. So we, and this probably looks familiar to you, Paul. So, what a third would look like is basically they kept that back in untouched, which is kinda what they did in this case. So that met their, their one-third, ten percent requirement. Any questions about this one? Okay. So that was pretty much it for how it works, unless anybody had any other questions about that. I was gonna get into heritage trees. So heritage trees, I know many-
This is one of the issues which we would like to discuss with the city council, and we can, after this, we can discuss any other issues which the planning commission members would like to raise.
So quickly, because I know you were asking earlier about specimen trees, so heritage trees is kind of another category of trees, and to be a heritage tree in the canopy ordinance, you have to, it has to be a healthy, structurally sound tree, and then it has to meet one of these following criteria. It has to be a state or county champion tree, and this is something that is done through the Georgia Forestry Commission. You have to apply with them, and they have a whole scoring system, I won't bore you with the details. Seventy-five years or older, an established feature or integral part of the area, a landmark or historic tree designation. This is something that the Georgia Tree Council does, and they have a whole nomination process that they do, and you basically get a certificate saying you have a historic or landmark tree. Or documented historical significance. So there's no minimum size criteria, really. It's kind of just based mainly, I think, on history, or having some kind of significance to the community.
My question, that seems awful objective, or maybe room for gray area. I mean, just for example, how do you know the seventy-five years without cutting the tree down? How do you know?
Well, I know, I, I joke that they have to show me their birth certificate, but I know that won't happen. Some people will submit, like, they have photos of when they planted the trees.
Picture.
Yeah, or they have a picture of that tree from eighty years ago.
But it, really, the person dealing with in their property are not wanting to show you that stuff to prove that it's heritage tree, because they probably want to take it down if they're dealing with arborists.
Right, that's, that's, that's one of the debates we've had.
This is one of the conversations which we would like to have.
We currently have no designated heritage trees in this area.
Yes, I was gonna say that. So right now, we have none that have been nominated or designated by the city.
People just don't know. I, that's, that's the first time I've ever even heard of that.
Well, believe it or not, Steve did some digging, and it was in the original tree density ordinance, heritage trees. It was really only mentioned one time in the definition section, under tree, it said protected specimen heritage, and it basically just said designated by city council as a signa, but it, it didn't really go into any specific criteria like this, so I have a feeling that when the canopy-
What I was gonna say was, this is the second time I've heard of that.
So what are you asking the council to? Do we want to designate heritage trees?
Well, so, some, let me, I'll just kinda go through some of the debate we had. So originally, the canopy ordinance said a hundred and forty percent of the tree canopy must be replaced if it's a heritage tree. We kinda bumped it up with the stakeholder committee to a hundred and fifty percent to kinda match specimen trees, 'cause we didn't wanna say heritage trees were less valuable than specimen trees, or vice versa. And we really didn't make any other changes than the recompense. When we came before the planning commission, the planning commission was kinda interested in increasing that recompense, and creating incentives to have a heritage tree on your site, and find a way for the city to kinda initiate nominations of heritage trees on So we tried to kinda find some middle ground as staff, and there was, we wanted the designation or approval not to be with the administrator or the city arborist, but to remain with city council, as it was in the density ordinance.
Like, we do not want to go to some private properties and start designing trees as heritage trees, so we do want to work with that property owner.
So we want the property owners to be the ones, or the tree owners, to be the ones to nominate their trees, and then, you know, as staff, we would give city council recommendations or advice on the heritage tree nomination, but it would ultimately come, the nom, the actual designation would come from city council.
Sandra, so what if you designate that heritage, sell the property, does that heritage still stay as a heritage tree?
It still stay, 'cause it's a nomination, it's a designation process, so once it's a heritage tree, it's a heritage tree. That's what I would say, unless you, somebody wanted to go back to council to say, can you take away my designation, would be the only way I would know to get rid of it. Maybe-
We're, we're talking about a substantial tree.
Yeah.
I mean, this is gonna be, a seventy-five-year-old tree isn't a, I mean, it's beyond specimen tree. It's like three or four X a specimen tree.
It's a big tree, yeah.
It can be.
It's a big tree. I mean, this is the kinda tree people chain themselves to, the minute they find out, somebody's gonna take it down. Yeah, we had an example of that at Birmingham Crossroads. Right. When the development was being done twenty years ago, people weren't chaining themselves to the tree, but there was significant engagement in the community. But they're, we were not too far from that, on a couple nights, and the developer went to significant expense in a ridiculous way. It was more, you know, a meaningless exercise, because the tree was gonna die for the size that it was, for the root base that wasn't able to be preserved. And yet, they still went ahead and moved it, because it accommodated the concerned community in that case. That's an example, that was a real one, and the trees, we lost the trees. Well, but my point is, why are we even entertaining recompense or replacement or anything else for something that, we've gone through all this trouble to designate as a special tree?
So still, if-
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so, if in case, again, if someone wants to remove the heritage tree, what, what then? It's not like-
We can talk about it live. We need to move them to another city.
Well, well, here's, I mean, if it's in the only place where somebody can build on their property, at some point, they have to have a way out of that lid, that's the problem.
Yeah, so it will, uh, city attorney's here, then he will talk about the takings and everything, but still, you need to have a way in which, if suppose, if there, if there is a heritage tree, and if you want to remove it, then what? But as the city manager said, we do not have any heritage trees in the city.
But I think your point is, if it is designated as a heritage tree, then whoever comes along one day, if they do take it down, there is a-
Process.
There, well, there is a process, but there also is a recompense that there's, it's greater than norm.
Mm-hmm, right.
So it's, it goes with the tree rather than the lot.
Yes.
Right, so we did increase the recompense to two hundred percent.
Mm-hmm.
And added a payment to it. So basically, there is a fee schedule we already have in place for the alternative compliance, and that's at the, that rate is thirty-one twenty-five, that's thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents per one hundred square feet of canopy.
May I ask you another question? So seventy-five years is fairly significant. I mean, I think our poplars, sweetgums, not all of our oaks, but a number of trees are, are full grown by then. Why would we not back it, if, if you wanna go on this path and have heritage trees, why would you not back it out, back it down, to where you're more at, at achieving full height, which I think is around the thirty-five to forty-year mark? And, and do it then, so that you're capturing all trees at that point, and hoping they'll all be heritage trees, and that way, if anybody, they still have a path to deal with them, but you've created a canopy penalty.
Well, remember the seventy-five years is just one criteria that you can meet. It doesn't have to be seventy-five years. So you just had to meet one of those criteria.
Is there a diameter?
No.
No.
There's no diam, yeah, so you only have to meet one of these, you don't have to meet all of them.
Okay, but you're not gonna, I mean, who's gonna do the state or county champion? I mean, you know, seventy-five years is the only reasonable one up there that is-
Well, the state or county champion, that's something that you just do through the Georgia Forestry Commission, and they're the ones who give that designation. So if you have a state, it also has a little further verbiage to this, I just was trying not to bore you to death. Is a state or county champion tree as designated by the Georgia Forestry Commission, or one that scores within ten points of a state or champion tree? Like I said, they have this whole score system that they use through the Georgia Forestry Commission.
Yeah, but, okay, I, I, I hear you, but here's my question, do we want people to register them, or do we not? I mean, I'm not sure where we are.
Well, I think that's one of the questions we kinda wanted to present.
Yeah, that's what I wanna, what, we're asking council to, do we wanna come up with the designations for the heritage trees and enact that, or not? Is that the question?
Yes, and we also want to look at the recompensation requirement. So once we have a designation, we want to look at what the recompensation percentage is.
Yeah, so I kinda did an example of what we have in the ordinance currently to kinda show you what it would be. So let's say, and the canopy recompense is based on the, the full canopy coverage of the tree. So let's say somebody had a seventy-five-year-old oak tree, and they went out and measured that canopy, and they measured it at twenty-two hundred square feet, because if you have a seventy-five-year oak tree growing out in the open, it's gonna have a very wide canopy. So I just threw a number out there, twenty-two hundred square feet. So if you take that times the two hundred percent that you would have to replant, that makes you have to plant back forty-four hundred square feet of canopy, which is gonna be equivalent to two to three large height trees, like we talked about earlier, other oak trees, poplars, hickories, thing like that. And the costs for planting those trees are usually gonna, and the thing I probably should throw out there, too, is heritage tree replacement is four inches minimum, not two inches like it is for protected trees. So planting four-inch caliper trees, two to three of them, you're looking at a cost of fifteen hundred to four thousand dollars, depending on where you get them and who you get to plant them. Payment into the tree canopy fund at the thirty-one twenty-five per hundred square feet, you're gonna end up paying six hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents into the tree fund.
Is that required if it's dead? Like, earlier when it's the dead?
No, it has to be healthy and structurally sound.
So, okay, go ahead, Rick.
Well, I guess the, the question about heritage tree and designation, if someone comes in, they wanna remove a tree, or they're gonna develop a lot, part of what you're gonna go through as arborist, if someone applies, is you're going to say, this is where it meets either a heritage tree or whatever. They don't have to designate it, do they? Or is it gotta be designated?
Well, I mean, at that point, I would just be looking if they have specimen trees on the site.
Not the heritage trees.
You'd capture it from a specimen tree, but if it's not designated-
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is where the other part of the conversation becomes complicated, because you've got, what we wrestled with when I was on the other side of the table, was, there is no real incentive for a property owner to do this. But there, yet there are some trees that we believe should, could or should be designated as heritage trees within the city. Land that we own, easy.
Sure.
You can designate heritage trees because it's property that we're in control of. But if you use the trees, for example, at the intersection of Freemanville and Birmingham, on the northeast corner-
Northeast corner, right.
There are, there are several large oaks that are there, that are falling into age and disrepair because of lack of attendance. That guy isn't likely to come in and say, I wanna designate my five trees as heritage trees, because he's then in, he's embracing the fact that he's gonna endure more cost. So it's more about incentivizing them not to do it. So part of this conversation, eventually, whether it's tonight or not, has to, has to evolve to a conversation of whether or not we as a city value those trees, and wanna create an incentive for the landowner, that's out of land, outside of our control, and whether or not we wanna play a role in that. And that's where we need to get to as well.
And I think that goes back, I think you're asking the council to some guidance whether we wanna, you know, we want to pick heritage trees, because I don't see any reason why any homeowner or property owner would designate a heritage tree. They may have a tree, and they may love that tree, and they're gonna protect it-
Yep.
But they're not gonna add additional burden on it to-
It encumbers the tree.
Right, right, so.
Can you go back to that, the list of those five, just quickly?
The requirement?
Yeah. Okay, so the state or county champion, the seventy-five years old there.
You came up with this list, who came up with this list?
That's in the ordinance.
It's already in the ordinance.
This was in the tree canopy ordinance that was originally adopted in two thousand eighteen. I did not tweak it, I didn't wanna touch it, honestly.
Okay, but, but so, whether it's now or between now and this ordinance comes before us, council needs to be prepared to make a decision, do we wanna enact a heritage tree requirement?
We can, we can move forward by saying that we want a designation of a heritage tree to exist within our ordinance. We don't have to designate any trees, unless we choose to do it on public land. But there are other vehicles, pathways, within the ordinance, if a tree does end up with a heritage designation that's outside of city property.
So how does it get designated, then? If we don't have a criteria?
We have criteria.
There has to be incentive.
The current, the current ordinance, as the state's, actually allows, or dictates that the, the arborist is going to nominate and designate the tree, which is, which is way too much power and authority in that role. The, the, if you, if you were to pass a current ordinance, at least with the language in there regarding heritage tree, we'll have, we'll have the ability to be able to move forward. You're not going to get anybody that's going, just like you said, is not going to designate a heritage tree until we can, or likely won't, until we can find some type of reason to make, or to incentivize someone to do so, which you could look at almost in the form of, you know, like a conservation easement type thing, except reverse.
Or lower the canopy requirement, maybe.
There's a, there's a whole host of things we could do to be able to incentivize, if, if that's what the council would like to see, of maintaining those heritage trees. I don't know that you're gonna get there tonight, but it is a point of, that we were unable to gain, this was the, really, the major one, that we couldn't gain consensus with, between the original stakeholder group, the planning commission and staff.
Okay, so right now, it's, it's in our order, but we're just, not really, you haven't been, yeah, we haven't been fortunate.
And right now-
So, question is, do we, wanna keep it in there? And one option is at a later date, come back and fine tune the, the criteria? Other option, just, you know, keep it in there, but knowing that our, our arborists and staff are gonna have to, we're gonna have to, to detail that and tighten it up. You know, I like the idea of, you know, we talked about, there's no incentive, if somebody wants to save a tree, they're gonna save it, but there's no incentive for them to say, hey, I'm gonna designate heritage. But maybe, I think Peyton said, you know, maybe give them a break on canopy cover on the rest of their property, or so much if, if they save some heritage trees and designate it, that might be, you know, a positive option for them.
Yeah, so I apologize, I did forget to mention that you do get extra credit for keeping a heritage tree. So instead of getting the canopy coverage that it has, you get forty percent additional tree canopy coverage credit.
Based on what that tree-
Yeah, so basically, if you had a, a thousand square foot tree, you would, it would be worth fourteen hundred square feet, which, you know, if you're looking at a large development, it may or may not make a huge difference.
Okay, so, as of, for right now, moving just forward, would the council be okay saying, keep that in there as is?
A criteria needs, we need to-
And that, that we, that the criteria, as is, will be in there right now, but that could be tweaked, either between now and, you know, when we vote on it, or at a later date? If, but is the council good with that, leaving that in there then? Is that the direction you needed?
One other piece, just the recompense, 'cause we were not able to come up with any sort of consensus on, it's a moot point, because no one's designating a tree, but for us to put something before you, it should have something in there for recompense.
Do you want to go to the recompense?
So for a seventy-five-year significant importance type tree, we're putting a price tag at a little bit under five thousand dollars.
Depending on where you recompense the tree from, but yeah, there, there is a method that, to actually cost out a tree, I don't know if it would necessarily come to five thousand dollars, but the, the, the recompense could come to that.
Well, like, your actual cost, you're only saying it'd be six hundred eighty-seven dollars, correct?
Plus-
That's what would be paid to the tree plant.
No, I'm saying cost, if you just wanted to pay.
Yeah.
If you wanna win.
That's plus that.
Yeah, that's plus, so you have to recompense and pay.
My point was, my point was-
Okay, you gotta add to it, okay. I thought that was an and/or.
My point was gonna be, you're building a million-dollar home, five thousand dollars is no significant hurdle at all. That's the, that's the debate we kept having, Joe, is what is the right number for it to be meaningful enough that either the individual property owner, who is doing a large estate lot, or the development community who's doing multiple lots, has reason to pause?
Yeah.
And, and we thought we'd pushed it pretty hard, but in your mind, maybe we haven't pushed it far enough?
Well, no, I'm just, it's, it's a quandary, you're exactly right.
It's a number, yeah.
Well, but the only thing that, you know, I could sort of agree, you know, a million dollars or five thousand, but, you know, if you have to take four or five trees out, or whatever, that would start to, start to add up. And we just, I think we need to be careful that it's not cost prohibitive to where somebody says, okay, never mind, I'm not gonna do this estate lot, I'm gonna split it up in three lots, you know? Because then I can afford to pay tree, recompense and whatnot. That's, that'd be my only concern. If it's a large enough lot, it may be, you know, you don't wanna push them to where they would add incentive.
And remember too, this is only if it's been designated as a heritage tree.
Right.
If it's not designated, none of these rules apply.
So, so would it say at this point, if we, if we keep that in there, but really at some point, it will need to come back and forth to tighten that up?
What's the current, what under the-
Current ordinance, what's the current recompense for the heritage tree?
In the canopy?
In the canopy.
Okay.
The one that, that current is.
Um, in the canopy ordinance, I believe it was one forty, and you got twenty percent additional covered for saving it.
Again, that's really, we could just keep it that way, and it's a placeholder, because it's, until we come up with an incentive.
As it comes up, if, at some point, you need to bring it back to us to, okay. All right, is everybody out with that for right now?
But that's even less than what we're suggesting right now, Steve.
I, agreed, but again, I, I don't think anybody's gonna be banging down the door to, to designate a heritage tree. So what, if you put a hundred and forty, two hundred, five hundred, I don't think the ma, the number's gonna matter, so whatever y'all wanna do.
I would propose this for consideration, is you had a lot of people engaged to get to the current proposal. I wouldn't necessarily encourage stepping back from that. If there was consensus from the larger group at this point to take it to a higher number, that we should consider adopting the higher number, it's still moot until we have designated heritage tree. But there isn't any loss in the intellectual properties that were invested in that to get us to this point.
Nothing.
Whether it's the, you know, the, the stakeholder group, planning commission, staff, whatever, already kind of ran over that at this point, I would encourage us not taking a step backwards.
Okay, so what we're saying is, at this point, it's a moot point, but we can, we could raise, at, at some point, we're gonna have to adjust it, higher or lower, or have that ability. And again, until we finalize this criteria-
We need to have the, there are gonna be some criteria in there. So if staff is being asked to put forward the criteria by which we're gonna adopt something, I'm gonna encourage, I would encourage you to support staff to, to keep the higher number.
Where did we land? We, so we, so the current canopy ordinance says, says one forty. After we worked with the stakeholder group and the planning commission, we landed on two hundred. Is it all right if we just move forward with the two hundred? Again, it's, it's, it's the same thing as the one forty, because we don't have any heritage trees.
As long as we come back at some point and change-
We can see how it works out, okay. All right, so council, looks like council's okay with that.
Appreciate it.
That's the only thing, right?
That was the only thing I have. I think maybe, at this point, we wanted to kind of open it up to the planning commission, if they felt there were any unresolved issues to go over.
Or any questions generally.
And again, I also wanna say again, repeat, I know the planning commission has put a lot of time and effort in this, so thank you guys for, for your work so far. And, yeah, we certainly wanna hear, hear the inputs you have.
I think, let me just start off with one item. As, as was mentioned, one of our, our, our approach here was to try to have, achieve some transparency. So, an ordinance is put in place, and is it working the way we want it to work? And that was mentioned by them in, with regard to the waivers, and that those would be reported out. We also wanna be able to measure our performance. We have a goal here of a certain percentage of tree cover within the, within the confines of Milton. And we have a, if you will, a bid-ask spread between ourselves and staff with regard to how frequently it should be measured. We on the planning commission put forward a, the notion that we should be measuring this every three years. Staff is comfortable with a five-year metric. It, in our view, the, there have been a number of changes recently which would promote development, specifically, think of Fulton County and the taxes, pardon me, which given, gives incentives for people to develop. And with the development, could come an erosion of our trees. And from our perspective, we'd like to keep on top of this and look at it at a three-year rhythm. And if at some point, and I think at some point, we will stabilize as far as our, our development is concerned, then we can back it off to five years, or whatever seems reasonable at the time. But our view is three years.
If you look at the fact that we're thirteen years old as a city, if we were at a five-year benchmark, we would only now be approaching our third measure, really second measure, as a city, because you'd go from one to five, five to ten, ten to fifteen. So it'd be the first, it would be the second official measurement at approaching fifteen years. Think about what's happened to our population in the course of that period of time. We've gone from twenty-eight thousand, and we expect the census to come up somewhere around forty. You know that there's been probably some impact, or would be an impact. We wanna make sure that we've got a lesser period of time, a shorter window, to ensure that we're measuring it, and not having loss by going out to a five-year window. I think three years serves us a lot better.
What, what is the, from, from a cost, I guess first of all, what did, where did staff come up with five-year, why you think five-year is better than three? And then what's the cost if we shorten it to, each time you do it, what's the cost to the city and the taxpayers?
So Sandra, help me out on this. So the staff, what staff was proposing, not, it's not five years, not to exceed five years. It has to be done within five years, so it could be four years, three years, depending upon the requirement, not to exceed five years. So we did some sort of a analysis, how much, how much resources it takes for one review of the tree canopy. And our estimate, it takes around two hundred man-hours to do an analysis. It also requires some aerial images and stuff. So, the thing is, yes, we can, if the city council says you have to conduct an analysis after every three years, we will basically make sure those resources are there to do this analysis. But we thought, okay, and what the staff also thought, many times, if you do an analysis after every two or three years, you cannot even see the difference between a, what was there initially, because it's getting so frequent. So if we are basically putting the language not to exceed five years, so if suppose there's a big development happening, or you are building this downtown, and you want to look at what sort of a loss of, or loss of canopy which we have made, we still have the tools to do this analysis before five years, but do not want to put something in language that says three years, so that you will have to require it after every three years.
Let me ask you a question, if you could have, you know, maybe leave the language as up to five years, but leave it open, but maybe have a point at two and a half years, where we revisit with the council, and that gives staff a little bit of time-
Yes.
If we, or whoever current future council is, at two, say, two and a half years, I'm just making that up, but then can say, at, at the three-year mark, we've seen a lot of development. We need to have a benchmark there, would that be a kind of a, so-
So if I understood, Mayor, you were saying, have the language not to exceed five years, but after two and a half years, discuss it with the city council, with the planning commission, to look at the guide, look at, look for some guidance?
Fred, you-
One of the things that I looked at was that Alpharetta, what did it look like five years ago? And now? A lot changed, and I'm sure the canopy has changed, I don't know how many-fold. That's why, when I looked at it and said, look, you know, three years, we oughta be looking at this.
And that's why I like even saying two and a half years. You know, one, one good, I say good thing, Alpharetta versus, in Milton, we're eighty-six percent agricultural, AG1 and residential, and, you know, they're probably fifty percent commercial. So that's where obviously we, they've seen a bunch of growth, but, Joe?
So, is the metric that we're going for here, the actual measurement of what the canopy coverage is? So when you talk about analyzing photographs, you talk about aerial images we're getting from whatever source, and going through and not manually looking at coverage and mapping it out, we're using some kind of-
GIs tool.
Yeah.
So we have thirty-nine square miles, as you know. So looking at the aerial images of all thirty-nine square miles, and, and trying to identify the canopy coverage which we have.
Okay.
Right?
I mean, yeah, there's a little more to it than, when you're doing a canopy study, you're not just getting regular aerials, you have to get specific aerials, you have to get ones with leaf on, and you have to get ones that are in infrared. So you have to get special imagery-
Special order, do we have access to those anytime we want?
Well, you can get it from the USDA, so, but it usually takes them a year to get that stuff out. So, and then you have to have somebody go through and set up the analysis of it, and that's where the two hundred hours come in. Because somebody has to actually go through there and teach it, what's a tree, what's-
Yeah, I was gonna get to that piece, but then I decided it was too deep into the stuff.
So, yeah, you have to go through that, and really, I mean, I'll just say this, from my professional experience, in a three-year period, the change in canopy, while it seems significant on the ground as you're driving around and you see development, from up in the air, when you're looking at a huge area, it's so small. A twenty-acre lot compared to your twenty-square-mile city, or thirty-square-mile city.
Twenty-five thousand square, uh, twenty-five, yeah.
Yeah, it's such a small that it's gonna be like a fraction of a percent. So you're not really gonna see a huge change in three years.
But it could.
I know it's, it could, but you would have to have massive, massive development for that to occur.
But we're winning accolades for being one of the best places to live in the country, not just the southeast or Georgia. We know that our population growth has been significant since we've created the city. We now have incentive, a distant, you know, an unexpected consequence of the Fulton County tax digest base. And we've got just the development pressure that we know that the community's keeping an eye on. I would hope that we would err on the side of shorter rather than longer. I think Joe's got a-
Yes.
A good suggestion for a problem.
Just to add on to that, you know, reading it the way it is, I look at, okay, how practical is this? Within five years, what is the trigger that would do that? Because anything I know is, if that's been to five years, five-year mark. So, you know, Joe's suggestion of every two and a half years of looking at it, because otherwise, there's no trigger in here that I can read.
So that's fine, so again, maybe we can have our language, as you are saying, Mayor, not to exceed five years, and after two and a half years, we will need a guidance from city council and the planning commission.
Because the council could wa, you know, there, there could, we could watch the development trends, if there's more development, obviously. If for some reason, if there was a downturn or whatever, and there was very little development, maybe, council chooses to, you know, with your input, to not, to-
Carol?
So I appreciate all the work and all the intricacies that went into this, and it's, it's been an interesting exercise. But the whole conversation is focused on maintaining what we could potentially lose. And I think most plans that are geared that way leave a lot of opportunity on the side. Where's the plan to incentivize Milton to plant? Because we have a lot of neighborhoods where you can see every roof, and they've got the same three trees in every single yard. We have a lot of places where we could create tree coverage and do a big campaign, because everybody loves a town that's well-planted. And not thinking about next year, and three years, and five years, and ten years, but at infinitum, a city that has been planted now with lots of oak trees and things that will create wildlife and habitat, et cetera, is what we need. We have a lot of homeowner associations that would probably be sensitive to this. Pastures, people clear-cut for pastures, the best horse pastures are those with oak trees and places where horses can get shade. I mean, there's, but we need, we need a positive campaign to plant Milton. Because this is fine, but this is gonna kind of choke down on, let's, let's just hold this. But why don't we surpass this and, and think big about planting Milton? We have all these great nurseries in town that would partner with us. We could get people thinking differently about their lots, their land, or et cetera. You know, let's plant. And then, we're gonna have excess tree coverage, you know, by the, by the canopy. Let's do something proactive, I think that would be a good message.
Let me ask this, this is outside-the-box thinking. You know, we talk about recompense, and whether you plant the trees on your property, or pay until a fund or whatnot. Could there be an incentive for recompense, where you have to either plant less, have to do less recompense with trees? If you, if there's ascending area, other than a public area, but, and I don't know, this might be a crazy idea, but basically, give somebody some credit with their recompense if they planted on another, you know, in another private property, if, and that way it leaves open. It's almost like the, the guy developing the lot, he's gonna have to go plant three trees. If we give an incentive, so you can only, you only have to plant two if you go to private property. And then we advertise so that homeowners, hey, do you want a free tree? You know, you basically get a free tree, it may promote it some way.
So, that's, that's in there, you know, but not, not in necessarily one or two trees. You have tree banking opportunities.
You're understanding the tree bank, but-
Nope, not the fund, where you can plant on someone else's property. It, right now, the limit is eight thousand, eight thousand square feet, or something along those lines. And we could seek to relax those a little bit.
Well, maybe that's just promoting, you know, and education, and, you know, and again, like I say, maybe, you know, they get a little, maybe it's some incentive or not, but if, you know, you plant it in the, in a neighbor's yard, a willing neighbor's yard, there may be, you know, I don't know what the number would be, but maybe the half the homes in Milton would be fine with a brand-new oak tree. And, you know, over a hundred years from now, make a big difference.
Personally, I would say, this is a great ordinance, this is a great draft. The big disconnect is the education. How we can basically promote our tree preservation ordinance to make sure that the implementation happens. It has all the right tools in place, but not many commuting folks know about those tools.
My main, my main concern was, as we work through this, how are we gonna educate?
What's the communication plan?
Yeah, I mean, this week, neighbor three doors down is building a pool. And I didn't get a chance to talk to Robin to see if they'd, um, hopefully, went through the process when they contacted me to make sure the city, they came and got their permits. But in the midst of this, three huge poplar trees were removed. And on that, well, I don't know how in the world, with those sizes of, and a pool, that, that, they, the recompense that have been there. So the education, I think, is most important to this whole ordinance, or otherwise, you know, we spend a lot of hours-
Yes, so this issue was widely discussed by the stakeholders committee also, and they were also very passionate about how we can educate the community. We talked about, maybe we can have some webinars. So it's not only, we will have number of community meetings, once this gets adopted by the city council, we are planning to have a number of community meetings, so that we can educate the community about the ordinance. But it's not only a one-time thing. It's, maybe we can have those webinars, maybe we can have once, like, and like, we have this workshop sort of a thing on an annual basis, bi-annual basis, sort of a thing, but you are right, education is the key.
But that, part of, part of the process with you on staff, and I know you're looking at all the intricacies of how you link, is if something comes into Robin where there is a permit, you, there should be automatic engagement to go over to Sandra to talk about, okay, here's the impact.
Yeah, there is.
Hopefully, we've got some built-in backstops to actually catch the enforcement of the tree ordinance when someone pulls a permit.
And, and I wanna- Yeah, I would add to the education part. I think it needs to be more high-level and spread further with just the simple message that, hey, we do have a tree ordinance, you need to remove a tree, you need to have, and then a link, or, or to get there, where's, you know, when- then a link, or, or to get there, where's, you know, when you think about having a webinar or a work session, not many people are going to care.
Sure.
But as long as the majority of our public know there is, you have to get a permit, you have, and then they, if they're in that situation where they need to remove a tree, they'll know where to go. But I think that's, again, we can handle that through our, our media and whatnot, just to keep plugging that out there, so that word gets around, you know, when, because a lot of people don't think twice about it, they think, oh, cut a tree, and, you know, that's probably where we get most of the calls. Hold on, Peyton, and then Laura.
Oh, quick question, Steve, when are we voting on this? When's this coming to us?
Oh, we're going to have to take this back and, and do some more work on it. We have some, some more wordsmithing to do, and it has to go before legal again, so you've got a couple of months.
Okay, I was just curious, I mean, I have like a couple minor comments, but it's not even going to affect what, what y'all do, so I'll, I'll save that for the council.
Laura?
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, I think it's real important to get to the tree companies. It's pretty rare for a homeowner, or even a farm owner, to go out and take down big trees. So, the, the tree company is going to be the one to, to, you know, educate the, the property owner about, you know, I have to go do this, and, you know, and this, so I would, I would suggest that, you know, we, I think we might know who some of these big companies are, and, you know, tap into that. I, I'm just going to make a brief comment, but I think the objectives that we see accomplish are, are good, and it's good to see that, because it's, as we've had these discussions, it's, it's easy to go back and do those checks. I also, Ron, you mentioned the waivers, and making sure that if there's an inordinate amount of waivers, I'd, I'd like the opportunity to capture that and see if we need to make some changes, so I think that's a great idea, and thank you to the planning commission.
And I, and I'll put a plug, I had a personal example, I, on my rental house, I have a huge tree that was dead, and I got a quote to take it down, and before I could even think about going to the city or whatever, my tenant said, oh yeah, the guy from the city showed up, and, you know, said it's, yeah, it's definitely dead, but my point is the tree company, you know, knew enough to, before they even scheduled anything with me, or whatever, so that's, you know, if we can keep that education going, so.
And along, along the same lines of enhanced communication, I don't know if we have a pretty comprehensive HOA contact list, because that may be another thing from a proactive standpoint, to go out and actually add, once we adopt this, share with them, because usually HOAs also have people that, you know, monitor what's going on as far as the homeowners, so maybe we, from a proactive standpoint, get that information out too.
Yeah, I was going to say, I get a lot of calls from homeowners that say, my HOA told me to call you.
And I, I think, again, it's, this could be as simple as, you know, with our communications department, to just quarterly plug out a little blurb about this, and, and I'll make one comment for everybody to keep in mind, you know, again, thanking everybody for all their hard work, and I've said this before, you know, it's interesting, we all, from a big picture, love trees, love the canopy, see the advantages to our environment and lifestyle, quality of life and whatnot, so we're all supportive of this, along with our citizens, but, you know, I would probably say, half the complaints I've gotten over the last 13 years are bad calls, or when the average person just wants to cut a tree, you know, take a tree down, so everybody loves all this, until they have to have a tree removed.
Absolutely.
So, again, you know, we, we've got to think from that perspective, education, and, you know, working with our citizens too, to, to be reasonable, so.
Right, I agree.
All right, anybody, anything else? Paul, and then Peyton?
No, I'm good.
Just moving off of the education piece, back to a couple of details. I think, Laura, to arrest one of your concerns about the waiver part, one of the things we built in was, we quarterly review, if there are waivers, that staff will present to the planning commission quarterly, a review of the waivers, to recognize whether or not there's a repetition of one particular waiver type or another, to recognize that there's a shortcoming in the ordinance, so that, that review is built into the process at this point. If there are no waivers, there's no re for staff, reason for staff to do the update. So the second, the second thing I want to talk about real quick, this is kind of a detail one, when we did the rewrite, at one point, we recompensed, it was pretty heavily burdensome on the city arborist, and it was not rising up to the director of community development for some administration on it, but I think in the rewrite, we overwrote at one point, and we, we usurped some authority that probably should lie back in the hands of the arborist, and that is when the waivers are coming forward, but the application was actually made to the arborist, not to the...
Administrator, yeah.
Director of community development, which is also the administrator. So I think it was just a linguistics thing that we overregulated it to the point where it had, everything had to rise to you, Ron, where in the actual assessment of the waiver, that should still lie in the hands of the arborist, and that was in, that's in 5.1 and 5.2, so I just asked you to go back and look at that.
Sure.
Make sure we didn't overregulate there to a point of, of paralysis.
Yes.
That's all I had.
Okay, anybody else? Anybody on planning commission, council? Okay, again, thank you guys for what Steve said, this, obviously, will have a little bit of work before it comes back to us, so anything we talked about tonight, or anything, you know, input you guys have, obviously, we have time to discuss that, or, or, you know, discuss that with staff to have options when it, before it comes back to us. Anything else you guys need from us?
No, just want to thank the city council and the planning commission members for working with us.
Thank you guys, because not only you guys, but, you know, staff, you know, been working on it a long time, and a lot of citizens and stakeholders and whatnot, so, good job, thank you. All right, I'll adjourn.